Welcome to the Board of Selecting Meeting for June 10th. To order at 6:32. Is that correct?
Yes.
Secretary's report. So I was a little late at one minutes to both of you, so they're in front of you. If you had a chance to read them and we're not moving forward, otherwise we can table it till next week.
I'm comfortable moving forward with the addition of the changes. I'd like to get a little more, that I penned in there, a little more flesh to the research and charter changes. And so we make a motion, or make a motion that we, where's the short one? That we approve the five minutes from the special meeting on May 21st with the addition of the director of the Works name.
Actually, that's not in the agenda. Can we add approval of those minutes to the agenda?
I'll make a motion, add May 21st special meeting. Just copy.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. So make a motion that we approve the minutes of the special meeting on May 21st with the addition of the name of the director of the Works. And that we approve the minutes from, we made 27 regular meetings with the addition in item 7, that we want to get information on our locations, statistics on the current usage, so that we can estimate demand and determine the breaking in cost for the project.
I'll second that with a change.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I noticed the special meetings on the last, I'm going to table that, so I corrected. Alright, so tax rebates. I was corrected by our tax collector about their tax refunds, not rebates, so please note that, but that was just an error on my part. So we have three rebates, three refunds going back to residents, three residents totaling $378,004.
I'll make a motion to approve the tax refunds in the amount of $378,004 and provide those.
Okay, second?
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I just wanted to address the Valley Courier article. I don't know if any residents have seen that, that came out on June 5th. I've been in contact with the reporter and the editor with multiple emails on the fourth. They are going to reach out to me and republish the correct facts. The article states that we approved a $18.5 million budget, we really approved a $21.4 million budget. So I just want to reassure everyone, as the other staff mentioned, everything that was presented at the town meeting and that is on the website is correct, and that is what our residents approved with a vote of 272, yes, 145, no. Mill rate would be, is it point?
21.9. Oh, .60.
.6, yeah, .6 increase. So again, in this paper, June 5th, they have the town meeting date wrong, they have the mill rate wrong, they have the budget wrong, so please don't, we just were afraid that our residents are going to think this isn't what they voted on, so we want to reassure you that incorrect information was published, and it will be corrected, but everything is on our website and that is correct, rest assured, so. So I'm just going to go on the record to correct that. And what's a 2.39% change, and then there's changes on too, so. Alright, Fountain Hill Frog Pond restoration project. So I put that on, and I reached out to, you know, Jane's here from the cemetery association. I reached out to Rich Forstall just to ask where you guys are at with your fundraising, to see if we could help spread the word, get the word out that you guys are working hard over there. They've drenched the pond, and the goal is to put a fountain back in the pond, to bring a fountain back to Fountain Hill. So I don't know if you have anything to report, I took a lot of notes talking to Rich yesterday, he wasn't able to be here, but they're looking to raise about $100,000. They're about a fifth of the way there. They wanted to give a shout out to the youth of Maisie, who lives right on High Street, who has single-handedly gone through the door and raised over $200, I believe, right? So she's really a little firecracker. Top notch is doing electrical, Withrop Construction did the digging out, and so I guess it's just a job that's ongoing, they have, the idea, the plan is to also add some benches around the pond, hydrose, and things like that. So basically, I guess a letter is going to be going out soon, you know, kind of a community letter. So we just urge all the residents to please support this cause, and it would be great to have a fountain back there, have that all beautiful.
I think we mentioned that with the construction, pro bono.
No, we did have the pond, but they did another area where they're doing green cemetery, and it had a little downtime due to something, so they expect sitting around, they went over and dug up the other area.
Okay.
We'll go and interact with them.
Contract with them?
Yes.
Jane, do you have anything to add? I watched, it's been a great overall, I mean, a general overview.
No, that's purely the project, and we're excited about it, we're hoping that with the letter that goes out, that we have additional contributions coming in, but, you know, again, all of the contractors said they'd great, we went out to bid with any of the work that was being done, so we're happy with the project so far.
Awesome.
That looks nice.
Okay, I just wondered if I missed anything. There is a gentleman on Little Street Rock, I think he forgot his name. He has offered to, I guess, donate the fountain, or get the fountain at kind of cost, which said?
We have a quote on the fountain.
Okay.
Yes.
And then he will also maintain it, or something, for our cemetery.
But that's part of our total cost.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Well, maybe it was just a really good, a better, because he works for the company or something, so. Very good, nice community effort, and please everybody support that when we get the letter in the mail, ask for donations. Alright, any questions, Jane, on that one?
No.
Okay, well, thank you for offering that. Library space issues, so.
No, not correctly.
So library space issues. We reported in the last meeting that Dwayne and Catherine were able to go over and meet with some of the library staff, registrar voters, a couple of the people on the library board, were having issues with the library space issues, just some storage issues, and we, Dwayne was on the agenda last night for the library board meeting, and presented a few options that he had come up with, he had met with Dick Gladen over there, he'd come up with a few plans. I think at this point, we have a couple ideas, do you want to kind of?
Yeah, no, I've looked at the whole project, came up with a few more ideas last night. They asked the cost, I said, I don't know, and we tried to get some rough costs, we want to make cost a good project, but the main thing is that everyone's got to work together here, and it's a tight space, and the registers need this space, and the library needs a space, and we don't have enough space, so it's challenging to squeeze everyone here, and I'm going to try to do my best to find some solutions here, quick-term solutions to at least a fee for a little while.
And it's more than just sharing space, it's the new equipment that the registrar voters have received from the state, and in the short term, their most recent letter, they've asked for the minimum. I called, said, we really want to, because obviously working in these meetings during long-range solution, they said they need a lock. You saw the letter, but they did not want us on it.
Yes, they need a lock for the tabulators to be locked up.
So that's something we can do pretty quickly, because I mean, I'd be, you know.
Yes, I agree 100% with you, mainly is we have to get the toys out of that room then, before we have to find a place to put that lock.
The assistant librarian keeps them on her.
Yeah.
She's, well, kind of explaining, because, yeah, the tabular toys, that means.
We need to come up with a couple, when we thought they were, there were two short-term solutions of space, and then there was the longer term. I want to go forward on all three, or rather, the first two, because they're not that expensive, and then get cost for the longer-term solutions, or at least.
Yes, and then there was a fourth solution last night, on one of the side halls there, to purchase some cabinets, make a number of all cabinets, and then you can take all the toys out of the plastic bins, and put the toys in the cabinets, so you don't have to lock them. Again, so I said I'd overpay some cabinets, and make a nice countertop to just try to resolve.
Dwayne demonstrated to line up all the plastic trucks and the cabinets.
I pulled some trucks out of the plastic thing, and said, here, you should line them up, and so when little Johnny or little Sophie's done, I don't know, it just.
So we went with cabinets, so you wouldn't have to dig in that wall?
Not yet.
Digging in the wall, though, probably is the ultimate solution.
That would be the long term, and again, might, I quit, and then I'm not going to throw out numbers, because I don't know, but the most expensive would be to get custom-made doors because of the height elevation there. Other than that, I don't see it being possible, and I said that I would donate my time to get this project done, to try to make everybody happy.
So do we have any sense of time on this meeting?
They said they weren't meeting again until August.
They did volunteer to have a special meeting, because we.
Yeah, we can't, we can't wait on that, so.
We would like to move this forward, right, on the selecting, so.
I'm going to try to get some quick-term prices for the cabinets, and then throw it back at the friends of the library. Lori last night said that she would, she and her organization, the group, would donate $1,000 upfront to help offset the cost there last night, so that's something to start in the right direction.
Yeah, very generous, and the library, the friends of the library, they raise all the money with their book fairs and their book sales and those things, so it's a different arm of the library, very generous kind of issue that they offer.
Thing is, that everyone's not going to have what they want, but we have to resolve the issue, and these tabulators have to be locked up, because as long as I'm sitting here, the other two ladies sit here, I don't want to fall on our backs if they get damaged.
But we can.
We're going to tax raise up the high for it. I also made a suggestion that we have six of those tabulators, we need one for normal voting, we need one for absentee, and we need one for backup, which means three reserve. I made a suggestion to take those three reserve ones, put them around the corner where we had, build a door where they can lock, and that would free up space in that closet.
One of the neighbors need those three, it's only something break down.
It's something that's.
I use one for early voting, one for absentee, one for data, and then the three can be rotated, they didn't finish this breakdown or anything.
They were concerned with getting guns, that's less than we had, so.
Patti's here, we're just talking about the library.
Oh.
So Dwayne was giving us kind of a summary of some of the options.
We understand we need a new lock, short-term, that was discussed.
Yes.
Millions would be given, prices, and costs and sizing and estimates, and there was some discussion that this would be presented in August meeting, but he always said that that's a lot clean, a little too long, so perhaps there'll be a special.
A special call.
Yeah, and they were open to having a special meeting, because we voiced that concern last night, waiting until August is just not going to do, because then we're going to get into primary time, and you guys to vote, and we have registrars who have every business, so. Well, thank you, Dwayne, for offering your services.
We all have to work together on this project to make it happen.
Anything you want to add, Patti, I don't know if you just walked in, but so, library space issue, anything in that?
Actually, yes, because there is some urgency to this, is there a chance that we can get that lock changed sooner than August, and perhaps, I don't know if she has anything planned for summer programs, but it'd be sooner that we can get those secure, the tabulators secure.
I need to get another lock for the, I have a key for the library. Somebody was over here today, and wanted to switch out the rugs, and the key I gave them does not work at the library, so I can't get into that, it's a problem, yeah.
Well, like I said last night, a short-term fix to put those cabinets against the wall there, the hardest thing would be to get the money and put it together, building and put them in place would be nothing, so again, if we got to go and everyone agreed on it, I could have the cabinets in a couple days, not eight, so I'm not looking to do in August.
Yes.
I'm looking to get it done now.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For, you know, kind of expressive urgency, it's very important, and now it's on the record again. Alright, parking recreation, so Parking Rec has come toward, to the Board of Funnels a couple times to spend some of their unspent money there, because they didn't have a director for many months, so they did get permission to spend some of their unspent budget for this year on maintenance items. So I did reach out to Kaylee, and I just asked what was going on with some of those projects, and she gave me a little update. We hired Boe, is it Boe? B-O-W-E?
Boe Painting.
Boe Painting has been working at Devon Field, painting a pavilion in the building, and that should be completed by tomorrow, but it looks very pretty, it's like a dark red color, so it's not the yellow anymore. They also powder washed the baseball, but there's a big statue, you know, baseball sculpture or statue up at the top, yeah. Shingles and the roof on the dugouts was donated by J.J. Rivera, so we'd like to thank J.J. Rivera for the donation. Acer Garden gave them a great price and some plants, so they purchased some things, and they're going to be planting in September, certain items. They're looking to regrade the A field at Devon A, which is the fenced-in ruling field, for those who don't know, that's the A field, along with some fence repairs, and then there's some irrigation issues there too, that we're going to work on. They had their first round of weed control, and also at the pond, at Flatwood Pond, and I found this interesting, the pond person had reached out to me, as I've worked with him for a number of years, they found some variable leaf milfoil there, and they also found, for the first time, one single invasive water chestnut plant, which is not something we've ever found here before. So water chestnuts actually are a really bad invasive species, produces a nut that remains viable as sediment for seven to 12 years, so they were able to pull out the one plant, because it was single, and so they were able to dig down and get it out. They think it got transported by either waterfall or by a fisherman, so I just wanted to bring that to the public's attention. Please, you know, bring clean equipment, or, you know, even the remote book guys, they take very good care of their remote boats, but perhaps something came in, you know, so things do transfer between water bodies that way, so it might not be waterfall, but that was a very interesting thing, but.
Are they going to do anything? I know two weeks ago, we got an email text from a resident with some concerns about Flatwood Park, some of the safety concerns, are they going to address any of them?
Oh, the maintenance, things like that?
Yeah, the toilets, picket tables.
Well, we're going to have the grill pulled out, because the new pavilion is going to be not where the current pavilion is, so the grill that is currently, let's see, to the south side, will get pulled out, that's the one that's rotted out, and then on the pavilion, the new pavilion gets put in all the way back, which would then be to the west, we can rearrange the grills then. We did buy a few grills a few years ago, and they're up at the town branch, I haven't gotten it installed yet, so kind of camp grills, if you know.
So they can be used, that'll lead to a basis, so the permanent grills are installed.
Well, there's already some of those camp grills there installed. The large grill, we're going to pull out because it's rotten, and that's one of the residents sent a picture, but that will probably get pulled in anyway, because the pavilion's going to get moved, and then that would be basically in the middle of the playground area, when the new playground pieces go in, so, you know, I think.
Concern about the safety concerns, that's all I have to say.
Yeah, and Kaylee has ordered a couple new swings, the swings set down there, and they're probably going to powder wash the pavilion.
And picnic tables, it looks like you just have to change the wood.
Yeah, those picnic tables go through a lot, we changed those planks over a couple years, so we'll get that taken care of.
And you'd help that off, if you like it.
Oh, thanks. But so that was a good Parking Rec report. Alright, town meeting, I mentioned just earlier, so we basically have a town meeting coming up for, we have to talk about the neighborhood grant applications that are the town needs to support, and the town, the board has authorized approval, then we're going for a town meeting, and then we ask residents to announce about the two. Right now, we have one from the Deering Congressional Church, and one that's going to get proposed from Tri-Town Good Services, or it has been proposed. I, if you prefer housing, I thought you reached out to me today, so Joanne, I think, is interested in doing it, and I usually do it as well, but unfortunately, I guess, she wasn't able to come tonight, so I don't know what the project is, but it's usually the main, it's in the buildings.
That little one that Tri-Town, it's got a little garden there, that's nice. Pictures of it, you know, it's nice.
Did they already put it up?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, right, I know they were working on it, but I didn't see it completed, so.
They want the grays, what's in person?
Right.
Add on me, a couple more, right, because I was.
Well, the idea was that the community garden is going to go over there, and so we had proposed it all, measured it out, submitted for grant, but we didn't get, so when Rod wanted to do a small, I said, well, if you put it at the same footprint as the one that was proposed, which was a big, like, 20 by 40 or something, that would be great, we could kind of maybe do a PCL, you know, instead of the raised beds, the, you know, it was all self-contained, you know, so then maybe we would have to fence the whole thing out, we could just fence in the new jaw, you know, I mean, it's a nice little garden, complete-looking garden. So I don't know what to do about, if Joanne comes in now, because it still has to be approved by, we have to have a special board of select meeting to get it on the legal notice for, you know.
Yeah.
How you do it, we do.
Okay, okay.
And I don't have an issue, because again, it's no bearing on the town, it's just a process.
It's just sort of a rubber stamp that the town.
Correct, that we support it, and again, it doesn't cost us anything, it's just saying yes, so. If she comes, I mean, it's not the first time, she's been here every other year, so I'm good with passing it, but if you want a meeting, have a special meeting, I'll sign also to.
I'm comfortable with passing in anticipation, what she's presenting, because it has been so strong the last seven years.
Alright, well, somebody want to make a motion to add that to the agenda then?
Make a motion that we add to the agenda for consideration of discussion, I'm passing for the community grant for Corbin Commons.
I'll second. And then she happens to come with you, and if we can get onto the town meeting at 2:00.
Well, I was thinking I could add it to the legal notice, and then at the meeting, you can just say that we pulled their application, if it wasn't one to pass, correct?
I mean, they have to get to deadline, I mean, not to signify, so it's sort of getting them.
Yeah, they have to signify only July 1st. So they do need to have the process, but you're right, she's kind of a year, so I don't have a problem with that. Alright, so I had a first by Russell to add to the agenda, Neighborhood Grant gave it second, so all those in favor?
Aye.
So now, we're going to move this forward, so now I need a motion to move it.
Make the motion, and look into a town meeting, remove consideration of grant application approval for Corbin Commons to a town meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, Town Hall, I'm sorry, it's your Harris update. I put that in there thinking I'd have more to report on, but we don't, so basically, you guys were told, kind of an update where the whole line wasn't attached to the substrate of the ceiling, so it's hanging down, so we had somebody in there to fix the cracked sheetrock, or the plaster, and he realized that it wasn't attached, the whole, all the hooks were just hanging, but not attached to the building, and that ceiling, so we had to stop work, we've had somebody come in now, a couple people to look at it, Dick does not have the price yet of what that's going to be, but currently, the stage is off limits, they're going to take the curtain down, the curtain has to be fireproofed every 10 years, and we're kind of beyond that, so we're looking into if it's cheaper to buy a whole curtain at this point that's fireproofed from the factory, or to get this from fireproofed. So we reached out to Good Speed and Public Value, they're doing stage work right now, so we're getting some information. So that's kind of what's going on to the public, I mean, the auditorium will still be able to be used, just not the stage like in the past, and as they begin work, that might change if they have other thing down off the stage and it's in the, you know, the general public space or whatever, so.
Well, I said on the wall, it was cheaper for us to go buy a brand-new curtain for John, and us to clean it and have it repaired, so I would look at that, and I'll have Dick go, I'll be naming contractor that gave the curtains up there for John.
Yeah, I think he's reached out to Fred and all, to see the facility structure, do you remember the price for the curtain?
How much did it pay, $18,000? Could be give or take.
Yeah, no, I counted, kind of like $20,000, $20,000 or something, so that's about.
But I don't know the size of their stage versus our stage, it's a rough.
Yeah, and ours is historic, so I'm custom-made or something like that, too. Okay, Town on the vacant land sales, I just wanted to sort of bring that up again, we, those are legal notices that they've published, seal bids are due in the First Lightroom's office by Wednesday, the 18th, at noon, so please get those in if you're interested in purchasing that land. And then requests from the Estuary, I just wanted to do a follow-up, so the Estuary, I reached out to all the towns asking for $2,500. We did bring it up to the Board of Finance, and they did not approve that, there was some talk about asking for donations from the residents, so I will try to remember to put that in my newsletter. However, in between that time, I just wanted to shout out, the Community Health Committee did meet, and they kind of decided to donate $1,000.
$1,000.
So now, the amount that the rest of the, what we, our donation should be $2,000 more, but so we'll work on that, but thank you to the Community Health Committee. Okay. Let's do it, so Audience of Citizens, I guess, is next. Looks like we have, oh, we have a new audience of citizens.
I was not, I was late, I closed up here, we don't have a leave.
In order to block this.
Block this, yeah, I think we all know where we are, just a sense of urgency for the registrars, for the tabulators, again, it's not about quantity and eyes, it's about state recognition, actually, we need to have that secured and locked, those machines, and personally, I don't think I can speak for Quadi too, but we don't feel comfortable signing off on taking the responsibility until there's a lock door. So there was three more emails today from the Secretary of State in the other, about signing that paper. Do you have a deadline for?
There was three more emails today about the pressuring of it, so I'm happy.
Could you explain, because people are watching our meeting, when is this form that you have to sign?
So when the tabulators were sent to us, they were on lease program, Carol, as First Lightroom had assigned the lease so that we would receive them, we were not given a choice, this is what the state mandated, and now they will become ours, so what the next step is, they have turned the ownership of the tabulators over to the registrars, whoever the registrars are, and they are signing a paper to take ownership, and the fact that we will take care of them, do their annual maintenance, secure them, so they're not destroyed, they are, you know, little wheels of computers, and keep them in a safe place, and as registrars, we don't have that right now, so we're looking to take a closet in the basement of the library and have that secured and locked, so that we can take, make sure they're okay. We will also be responsible for plugging them all in every few months for the battery life, for the rest of our lives, as well as maintenance every year on them. So that's kind of our job that the state has mandated to the municipalities, and we represent the municipality on what we have to do, so we're looking to you as the selectmen to make that. So we're looking to you as selectmen to make that decision to turn a closet into a locked closet and relocate some toys and things that the librarian has in that closet, so.
So you're not sharing the closet therefore?
Yeah, so we don't share.
Sharing the space.
Right now, it's a shared space. We don't have control. We're there once a week. I think it's just not overseen, so our job is very part-time, as you know. We don't work full-time. There's 219 districts and only, 19 towns and cities have full-time employees. Most of us are battling the same challenges, so don't think we're special. There's many registrars out here that are battling the same thing, but state mandated. And we have to do it, otherwise the SEAC, which is the state election officials, get involved, and then we could possibly be fined if we don't. And I don't want that to fall on us. You know, the closet that we're trying to share, you know, some are worried whether floods, whether the sprinkler goes off, that's insurance. That's not on me or Claudia. We've done anything in our power to secure them. So that's what we're looking to do as fast as we can because we are getting, because there were three emails today about signing the papers.
Well, thank you for giving that overview. Just a good day watching.
Do your best for the end.
Oh, I'll be so happy when it's over.
Anyone else? We have one person on the line, Fran. Do you have anything to add? I changed them on my camera. I'm not watching. Okay, so Selectmen Report. So I don't have much. I just wanted to touch base on the paving. So I talked to Eric for DUCW. He went out to three vendors today or yesterday, I don't know, but there are six different jobs in locations. There are six different locations in town. He's thinking he'll start the week of July 7th. He doesn't want to have any roads ripped up during the 4th of July holiday. And I guess that was pretty much all gave me. Oh, and then he's working, he's reaching out to Runningford Farm to see if they can do chicken before July 1st. Because he has, that's still a heavy in the budget to do the chicken. Those were Eric's notes.
Oh, will you be sharing with us the location so people can know?
Yes, and I asked if I should announce those now, and he said, hold off on those. So I don't know why, but I know there's some of the roads that people have commented on, the bottom is part of Westford, part of Sheehaw, you know, but maybe around Old Valley, I'm not sure, but. So there are some that people that live there and drive them, no, but they're on the list because there's huge problems. But so that will get published, so people on the streets will know. Anything else?
We have the bylaws from the, like, station building from the, we will discuss.
Oh, yes, I think we, I think I mentioned that too, that I did want to put it on the agenda because I wanted to talk amongst ourselves and then talk to the Firehouse Committee. That way it's, like, not that it.
But that's fine.
Doesn't need to be public, but that way we can tweak it all before we make it public. It's just the bylaws of that committee that they came up with. They did a great job, but there were a few things that, yeah.
So our goal's there at the, the next meeting.
That was the 16th, yeah. Is the meeting in 17?
16.
17.
16, 17.
17, assuming the reports are not, maybe they're going to fall. And then we will say, like, WPCA has the meeting on the 16th. It's a public, public hearing?
Public hearing, and then followed with a regular meeting, but we know that the board will should control for a, for a gathering.
Beginning at 6 o'clock?
Yes.
Okay, so I think public wants to come out and talk about if there's any rate increases and that sort of thing, so this is, you can come out and hear about their budget.
I have one other thing, a cross between update and an audience of citizens. Christine Nujia called me concerned about Union Street. I know we've done some good work doing that stop sign by the church, but I mean, I think there is a speeding problem going off 154 onto Union Street. About a month ago, they had a really horrible accident in their house, which I had not been aware of, and then down Union Street. And three people's vehicles were damaged. It was very frightening. It came on as speeding and alcoholism. So she had a lot of creative ideas, which she'd like us to think about, which is constantly putting up a sign there, you know. Some sort of sign, you know, welcome, enter Deeper, slow down. Like a speed posting at the beginning. So there's a speed posting later down, but you need to see it coming off of, you know, 154 and then you curve down the road. So it is a problem, and she's, most of the thoughts are taken to the design committee. Yes, they've taken a look at it, says, could they suggest some signage for that? So I just wanted to raise that. She couldn't be here tonight.
So this is heading north from your call on 154?
Yes, yes.
North on Union, okay. You know, south then, no, not then.
Chucky there coming towards Chester.
Maybe the design committee meets, they should invite Mr. Kraus, Trooper Kraus there, so they can talk about it. And I'll have him talk to the guests.
That's a good suggestion.
Just want to make a correction. That was a distracted driving incident.
Was it distracted driving?
Yeah, there was an alcohol involved.
All right. What, speeding?
I can't speak to that. I didn't take the report, but it was a distracted driving incident.
Does distracted mean cell phone use or something?
Uh, it could be cell phone, it could be radio, it could be reaching for a coffee, and that's it.
Big distraction? So we have to get in cars, you know, et cetera.
So, well, that's good. For design advisory, people running into downtown things. Like, we don't really have signage on our, your mission statement, but, well, we do for downtown, but not street signage, but.
Anyway, consider a grace as a mission.
Yeah, okay.
It's all.
Give them an update of Catherine, I can do an interview. A finance collector.
We're looking, yes, and I'll, I think we can update on the assistance as well, if you're ready for that. We've been, as Wayne and I have been interviewing with our bug, with Dr. Omar, and we've seen a number of candidates. It's, we have a few more to see, and we are feeling positive that we, I am feeling positive, you are too, that we will soon be able to make a decision and offer. We'll be bringing them on to be careful for a second meeting with a couple of others.
I'm looking forward to those second interviews. I need to whittle it down, and I do appreciate the, the committees are meeting very long and long hours often to interview these people.
And we had a spot while I'm, I noticed, and the next round of people are going to interview, make sure that there's someone with a finance background to help out. Because Catherine, I may see something differently than someone else, so. You're doing all.
That's very good, yeah. And for the assistants, the selectmen, yes, we have some really good candidates, and we are going to make an offer soon, so. I'm very excited about that.
No more minutes?
No more minutes. I did find out that we are looking for an Assistant Animal Control Officer. Our Animal Control Officer was on maternity leave, and so Norm's office in Essex, the First Selectman's Office, asked Chester and Westford and Deeper to post the events. So those will be posted on website. Anyone has any interest in those, those are part-time positions, but. So I assume they'll be posted in the morning. I just got the email from Maria about 3:30 or 4 o'clock Saturday.
Did you, Carol, want, or actually doing, even I were at the regionalization. You attended the last meeting of the year for these four trade boards, and there was follow-up, Terence, a letter that you had that read with First Selectman Lindar of Chester, and they voted at the meeting to, from the study to get there and consult, or maybe any answers to those questions and any other pertinent ones that this experienced consultant is, we may need to make, to move forward on, have that by the end of the summer.
At least you get the ball rolling.
Yeah, that's very exciting, and it's just taken too long now. I mean, the ball is rolling, but it's, we're all rolling. We all want it to be really rolling, you know, but yeah, that's good. Good report.
They did say, Brian did say in the meeting that even if they do a quick little consolidation with grade six, when grade six up, it's a year, 18 months. So it's not, there's something that's going to happen next school year. It's a, it's a long, drawn-out process.
My recollection is, or my understanding is that the state has to approve any changes, so that's why it takes that long. And not only the logistics and the staff and all that, but then the state has to approve whatever we want to do. So I think that's what drives, makes it drive us out to, right. Brian, why don't you guys be able to go to that meeting? So it's an issue. Very good. Anything else? I do have a report on you for the flag. Basically, sort of to do it and then ask for forgiveness, is basically what happens.
He's going to come.
You heard that.
I know, but I reported that a thing, but she kind of said, every source's stance is nothing on the horse. But she said personally, she's driven around Connecticut now, and she sees them in almost every town. So apparently, she's kind of assuming losses are an issue they don't really come up to.
This was an initial.
Shot in the record.
So thank you for the Gates family that volunteered to put flags up in the Winthrop section of town. And because they look so beautiful on Main Street, and that is such a beautiful part of our town, it would be nice to have them over there as well. Especially when we do that lovely parade every year, it is just a, you know, beautiful green little walk that we do. It would, it would really look nice to have flags, so thank you for that. Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
7:10, I guess it's.
7:00.